Good evening. I'm David Assad, the chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River. It's 6:00 PM on Thursday, January 20th, 2022. We are meeting in hybrid format at one government center in the first floor hearing room via Zoom. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 38, Section 20, subsection F, I hereby notify all persons in attendance that this meeting is being recorded with both video and audio devices. Fall River Government TV Alex Mello is recording both a video and audio version. If anyone desires to make an audio, video, or combination recording thereof, please notify me now and I shall make a public announcement of your intention. No one here, no one online, okay. Our recording secretary this evening, although remotely, is Christine Alex. Present this evening are permanent members John Frank via Zoom, Jim Corkins in person, Dan Dupre in person, Joe Pereira in person, and alternate member Ricky Sahady via Zoom. Also in attendance is the Assistant Director of Planning Caitlin Young, and she's here via Zoom. I don't see Bill Kenny, okay. Christine, have all petitions to be considered been properly advertised and all interested parties notified in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Zoning Board of Appeals and Massachusetts General Law Chapter 48 is amended?
Yes.
I declare the January 20th, 2022 regularly scheduled meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Fall River open for such business as shall regularly come before it. I remind all persons presenting before the board, including the petitioners or butters, anyone in support or anyone opposed to the petition, that your presentation should be limited to three minutes. Questions and responses must be directed through the chairman. The board's rules and regulations direct the board to specifically look for information which supports the petitioner's claim. As such, a petitioner should identify and factually support the basis for the petition. I hereby advise the petitioners and all interested persons that this board is the Zoning Board of Appeals. This board's authority exists pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 48 and is limited in scope and deals with the use of land as regulated by Chapter 86 of the ordinances of the City of Fall River. Additional permits, licenses, reviews, and/or approvals may be required for the specific development and/or use, which is the subject of the petition before the zoning board this evening. The clerks in the building, planning, engineering, and licensing departments are competent in the discharge of their duties as clerks. They are, however, not lawyers and are not competent to give legal advice. The action taken by this board has a real and lasting effect upon the title to your real estate. I urge all petitioners to seek competent legal counsel before filing your petitions and after a decision of the board has been made. For example, there is a city ordinance 2015-11, section 10-1, requiring site plan reviews. A copy of the ordinance is available at the city clerk's office or from the planning department. I remind everyone that the building inspector is the zoning enforcement authority, and you are here this evening because the building inspector has determined that your proposed action is contrary to the City of Fall River's zoning ordinances. The City Charter, section 9-18 mandates that all multiple-member bodies develop and adopt rules or policies for public comment. We have adopted such a policy, which in short provides for citizen input on zoning board-specific matters at the end of this meeting. I disclose that an official copy of the Fall River zoning ordinance is available in the city clerk's office. One cannot rely on the online zoning ordinance. I also disclose that a new, recodified edition, approved by the planning board and city council in accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 48, section 5, now with its red grapefruit cover, is the official copy. Are there any questions before we begin? I cannot listen to Agenda Item 01, Angel Estrella Molina. That would be cheered by Jim Corkins and the alternate member Ricky Sahady will be the fifth voting member.
Do we have a representative for Angel?
Yes, sir. John Connell from SciTech CEC. He had just, on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Molina. This petition was before you.
Yeah, okay. We just need to handle that first item of business as where this petition had been rejected and not approved within the last two years. Could you please explain the difference between this proposal and the original proposal so that the board can determine if there's a significant change so it can be considered?
Yes, sir. It was before you on the 14th of July and denied for, it was a four-unit proposal at that time, four units with four parking spaces. The new proposal is a two-unit apartment complex, still the four spaces in accordance with the zoning, and the footprint has shrunk on the home to provide some additional clearance between the property lines for access around the entire building. That's the, and that had gone through the planning board on October 13th. It was approved as to specific and material change at that time with the planning board.
Thank you. Members of the board, have you any questions concerning whether or not this is significantly different?
No questions. I would move that it is indeed a significant change from the prior application on this site.
We have a motion from Joe Pereira and seconded by Dan Dupre that it is significantly different. This will require a four-fifth vote to carry. John Frank?
Yes.
Rick Sahady?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Jim, yes. All right, I'm sorry, you may continue.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you. As I mentioned, the new proposal is for a two-unit apartment with the four spaces conforming to zoning. We've done some shifting of the townhouse a little bit, again, to increase the setbacks, and we conform to the zoning as far as the parking goes. We work with the shape and the size of the lot, which are difficult, but I think we've put forth a responsible proposal and it will be beneficial at the end of the day. So I, we would again ask you to approve this in accordance with the variance request in the A2 districts.
Members of the board, any questions?
As to density, what are your plans as far as number of bedrooms in each of these two units?
I don't have a, I don't have the floor plan of this, but I believed they were two-bedroom units, but I could double-check on that.
Any further questions? Is there anyone either online or impressed person that is in favor of this proposal? Anyone opposed? I have no opposition or no proponents shown. Could I have a motion one way or the other, please?
I make a motion to approve.
Motion approved by Joe Pereira, conditions? Second by, I'm sorry, wasn't it you, John?
Yeah.
By John Frank. Work site review.
What else? I'm not dividing it. Number of bedrooms?
Okay, based upon the plan as submitted and work site or plan review, those in favor? John Frank?
Yes.
Rick Sahady?
Yes.
Dan Dupre?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Jim Corkins? That's, yes, and so that motion carries and the plan is approved.
Thank you very much to the board, appreciate it.
Thank you for the thoughtful redesign.
Now we'll go find the chairman. That motion always carried.
Agenda Item 02, John Santos Jr. of Santos Family Trust, 1630-1632 Meridian Street, lots U85 and 0020. Variance request to subdivide the 8-acre Apostle into eight lots, leaving the existing dwelling at number 1632 Meridian Street on Lot 1, the existing dwelling at number 1630 Meridian Street on Lot 2, and the remaining six lots for future development, waiving requirements in the R30 district for minimum lot frontage for Lot 1 and minimum lot setback for Lot 2. This was tabled from the December 16, 2021 meeting for a more, for a clarification of the plan. Jeff Tolman, I think, is the, Jeff, you there?
I am here.
Okay.
So, as you can see, we had submitted a revised plan that added more detail to the, to the subject lots, lots 1 and 2 that we were requesting relief on in addition to the additional lots that we were showing on the plan, just to basically show that lots 3 through 8 would be conforming lots under the City of Fall River zoning bylaw and to better outline the exact relief we're asking for on lots 1 and 2. I know that was a big concern of the boards at the last meeting, so I'll be happy to answer any questions that the board might have just to quickly go over what we're looking for. Currently, the two houses that are on this property, which are on two separate lots, do work granted relief from zoning back in 1992, both for lot width and lot frontage. The proposed plan that's before you tonight, before you tonight, would eliminate three of those nonconformities and would also make the lot width on the lot that 1632 sits on would increase that from 20.07 feet to 70 feet. So that'd be an increase, obviously, of 50 feet on that lot. But we would be creating one new nonconformity, which would be the building setback to the house at 1630. So the relief we're asking for is the building setback at 1630 and also the lot width on Lot 1, which, again, currently that lot is 20 feet, we're at 20.07 feet. We're asking for a 70-foot lot width.
You're now looking for a variance of 70 feet for Lot 1, Jeff. You're increasing it by 70 feet.
No, we're increasing it by 50.
By 50 feet for a total, yes.
Yes.
And those now are the, those are the only two aspects from the zoning bylaw that you need relief from. The other lots that you're showing, lots 3 through 8, are all conforming lots once the proposed 50-foot-wide subdivision roadway is in.
That's correct.
But for Lot number 2's physical existence and Lot number 1's creation by that prior variance, you couldn't, you needed the setback on Lot number 2 to get the 50-foot-wide road coming in. Is that correct?
Correct, that is correct.
So there's only two, there's only two variances that are required for this project?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. The plan makes it a lot clearer this time around, thank you.
You're welcome.
Members of the board, questions? Dan? Joe? Jim? John? Ricky, even though you're not voting, do you have any input?
No.
Caitlin, anything that you have to?
I don't have any comments or questions, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? I know that I saw an email today. Shame on me for not pulling through the file right now. There was a woman by the name of, I'm gonna have the English teacher maybe read the letter if she's got it. I'm trying to find it. I can't even lift my thumb to get to the page.
The email was from Mrs. Eileen Reposa. She also had emailed at the last meeting, simply stating that she was concerned about the proposal, still concerned about the proposal.
John Santos, Eileen Reposa, here it is. Why don't I look at the last page? There we go. Today, it says today, so I'm assuming it's today. 4:29 PM. Dear Zoning Board, my name is Eileen Reposa. My address is 813 Meridian Street, 4 of Amass. Due to COVID-19, a compromised immune system, and a husband just coming home from heart surgery, I'm unable to attend any public fun. Eileen, you're not out there, right? No, I don't see her there. I would ask the zoning board to postpone the hearing on this matter. In addition to many of my neighbors are the opposition to the subdivision of the following, 1630, 1632 Meridian Street. Due to COVID, my neighbors are also unable to attend. We feel that is our right to, okay. I think this was from the last meeting, we read it. That's not, no. Okay, so Eileen is still opposed, and I think she sent an email today saying that she was still concerned about it. Is that correct, Christine? Okay, thank you. This one is, oh, it's the same December 15th meeting, appeal letter, Mr. Antonio Daniel. I don't think you're here. But he and his father were both here last meeting, and they were opposed to it, correct, Christine? Yes, okay.
And Ms. Reposo was notified that there was Zoom availability for tonight, correct?
Christine, I think, had that conversation with her today and said that it was available, she could be here. If she couldn't physically be, she could be here online, and Christine gave her the Zoom credentials.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else that I didn't hear from who was opposed to this petition or in favor of this petition? Okay, hearing none.
The full letter, if you want to see if there's anything different than what we received today.
No, that's fine. Okay. Members of the board, we have, this is what we have before us. Two items for relief on the variance. Do we get a motion to grant, motion to deny? Any conditions you're interested in?
I'll make a motion to grant with site plan review.
Grant with site plan review. By John Frank.
I had, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I brought up the last time about a, they're gonna strip all the trees out of there, like a buffer, noise reduction from the highway. I mean, that'll go through with the site plan review.
All right, so we got John Frank's motion. Do we have a second on his motion?
I'll second the motion so we can.
All right, so we have a second on the motion. Now we can discuss.
Well, yeah, that's, if that's something that site plan usually would take care of that, but if that's something, I felt the same way last time, so we want to add in as a.
You want to modify your motion to have no clear cutting? Caitlin, is that the language we want, is clear cutting or that there will be a vegetative border?
I would use the term vegetated buffer, and it will be something that is reviewed through the site plan review process but also through the subdivision approval process as well.
Okay, yeah, definitely for the highway, the 24, there needs to be some type of vegetative border. It's usually done anyways by practice, but to put it in doesn't matter.
No, let's put it in, let's make an express condition if that's, Dan raises it, John Frank says yes. I see Jeff Tolman saying, I'm not sure whether you're saying yes to me or yes to.
Yeah, that, that's fine. It's in our best interest to have one as well for development, so we're not opposed to a buffer.
Okay. And Caitlin says yes, that's the vegetative, vegetative buffer is good. Okay, so now with that amended, motion, Dan Dupre, Joe Pereira seconds it, yes? Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, okay. Dan Dupre?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes. So that petition is granted with those conditions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number, reel number one. William J. and Laurie A. Souza, 47 Lapham Street, F1837. Variance request to convert the existing third-floor storage area into an apartment, changing existing two-family to a three-family, waiving all zoning requirements in an R4 two-family district. Does somebody have, who's got that one? That's you?
Come on.
Come on down and tell us what you want to do, please, sir.
Okay, we resided at this place for 22 years. We raised our children there. I've got a couple of boys in their 30s that share the second-floor apartment. There's four bedrooms on the third floor that are literally just storage up there, and they're full bedrooms, each one of them has a closet. There's a couple of additional rooms in there and an additional closet in the hallway. Our intent is to convert the two of the bedrooms into a kitchen and a bathroom, have a full means of egress in the rear of the building, and hopefully convert that into apartments. Each of my boys will have a place to live without driving each other crazy as well as driving me crazy. And that's pretty much it.
You're gonna have two egress, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, so there's, right now, there's a stairwell that goes up there to the third floor from the side entrance. The house was designed to have a front entrance, so the first and second floors have a front means of egress and a side means of egress. My intent is to use the rear bedroom as a means of egress for the third floor, if granted. That way, they'll at least be, you know, comply with requirements. There's plenty of room, the rooms are large, there's eight-foot ceilings, the rooms are 20, 12 and a half by 11.2 or something like that. So they're large rooms, they're big enough rooms. Right now, they're filled with storage. As I mentioned, my children are both in their 30s, so they really need to, like, spread some space out and.
So maybe that's a good reason to deny, to make sure.
If only it was that easy. Unfortunately, they're rented cheap.
So, but you're going to have, now, again, you're talking about something that's personal to you. This district, and it's a large lot, you've got 10,000 square feet according to this plan, but it's a two-family, it's a pre-existing, non-conforming, based on where it is, structure. I heard, so you want to turn it into another apartment, so it's gonna have a kitchen, it's not just additional living space. So it's going, so the boys get a scratch ticket and move out tomorrow, you're gonna have somebody you don't know, you're gonna rent it out in the third floor?
Well, that wasn't my intention, I've been.
I know that's not your intention, but practically, that's where we are.
Okay.
So it's going to be two, it's gonna, when you do the conversion, it's gonna be a two-bedroom?
Yes.
So we're gonna have two new family, two, possibly two bodies moving into the area, another unit, okay? Will you have lawn, is that going to be parking or any off-street parking now?
Right now, there's a, there's a large driveway. I think the site plan shows it, there's a large driveway. It's about 80 feet by about 20 feet for the most part, and then it widens up towards the carriage house in the back. So there's plenty of room, plenty of parking in the driveway for additional vehicles, which on occasion, it is used for that already. I've got 100-foot of frontage with my property. I don't know how many cars allocates that, or if that counts for anything, the frontage. But we use.
No, no, the lot, the lot itself, without the house on it, is a conforming lot. The two-family is a conforming use in the area. It's the addition of that other unit that you're here before the board because two-family in the R4 district is the most you can have. When I look around, there are some three families, there are some four families, there's a few single families. You know, you're looking to convert, I understand. It's a variance that you're looking for, so I think part of your argument would probably be the current building, the building as it exists right now and what you're trying to do to convert it, so if the board wants to consider that. But I think the fundamental hurdle is just that you currently exist and you conform to the current zoning use and regulations. And I understand what you want to do for that other unit. So let me see what the other board members have to say. I'm one of five. Dan, any questions? Change the use, Joe, density, any questions about the conversion?
They said two-bedroom, so.
Yeah, no, no, I said two-bedroom, but I'm saying, just in terms of the R4 district, another unit in there.
How many cars do you think you can fit in the driveway?
Just in the driveway? I'm gonna probably say seven or eight, yeah. Right now, our two units, I wish I had a computer, I could show you, Google Earth. But like I said, the driveway is about 80 feet long and about 20 feet wide on its narrowest point. As you go past the main building of the house, it widens up by about another 15 feet.
Down to the two-car garage that's shown. Do you use the two-car garage as a garage?
I do.
Or is that more storage?
There's room for storage on the second floor. That's what we intend on putting the storage that we have on the third floor now as a spillover. But yeah, there's, right now, unfortunately, the garage itself has a couple of convertibles and a motorcycle, so there's no room for anything on the first floor.
Okay.
So.
And driving by, it's apparent that this was a three-family house somewhere in its history.
Interesting enough, and what's interesting is the third-floor bedrooms each have skeleton locks, so I don't know back in the day what it was used for, but I think at some point it was.
At some point, it must have had to have been used as a bedroom.
Then again, if there was not a kitchen up there or a bathroom, it would not have been a three.
Yeah, no, that's, but I'm listening to the four bedrooms, and I think it's four bedrooms. I was waiting to hear that there was something.
Big family.
Okay. Jim, anything? John Frank, any questions? Any comments?
One quick question, there was no exterior work to be done on the property, right? I know you mentioned you were gonna use one of the bedrooms to do the stairway, but you're not, that bump out in the back, that's one story, that's not gonna go to three stories now and put the stairway in there, correct?
I just, to make sure I understand your question correctly. We have to put an external stairwell on the external of the house to make it comply, to have a full means of egress.
Okay, but it's all gonna fall into the footprint that's currently there? Or are you going to need any variance in either direction?
Oh, no, no. It should fall into the footprint that's currently there.
That was my question, okay.
So is it, is it going on the north side of the property, which is your narrower setback from the neighbor? Or is it going on the driveway side?
I believe that's, if I'm not mistaken, you're talking north and south.
To your plan?
My, according to my plan.
Is it going to your next-door neighbor at number 37?
No, it would be headed towards Oxford Street. That's where the egress would be, in the backyard.
So it's gotta go to the backyard, heading towards the garage?
Right, and then it would possibly come down. I haven't spoken to anybody yet regarding the best way to approach it, but I, just by looking at it, I would assume going out that, because there's a full window there right now, and I would think going out that way and then going down and around the building into the driveway would probably make more sense. It's either that or go the other direction.
So it's just a fire escape?
Basically, yeah.
Because you can't, you can't re-enter the building once you exit, so you'd have to go totally externally for fire code.
For fire code.
Yeah. So like, you said that you're not gonna close it in, right?
No, it's not gonna be closed in, right? That's what is the intention anyway.
So once you go out, you're gonna stay, the stairwell has to be out, you can't come back in.
Okay, so I just wanna, just wanna be clear. It's gonna be an exterior fire escape slash porch stairway. You're not gonna be building a tower on the side of the house.
No, we're not gonna build a tower. We just wanna put a full means, you know, a stairwell. You see these days, you know, as opposed to the old-fashioned fire escapes, now they get the full stairwell that they put out there that they bolt to the house. That, that's the intention.
So if you're thinking of doing something like that, John, then it will be in compliance with the fire, with the fire and the building code? The second means of egress?
Yeah, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure that they didn't need anything in.
Yeah, no, and I heard, I got that, but I just want to make sure that that's where we are with it. That that's all that it is, it's just a fire escape, means of, second means of egress.
Thank you.
Okay. Caitlin, any, any comments from you? Anything we should know, anything that we're not addressing?
Not that I'm aware of. John's last question, question kind of answered what I had in mind, so.
Okay. Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay, well, you've got existing conforming structure in a conforming district, they want to vary it and get another unit in there? Large piece of property, the building is skewed to the north. The configuration of the building is such that all the work will be done inside, you're just creating another apartment. But it is a two-family district, so. Do you think they've met the burden by shape, topography, soil condition hardship about the building? If you have, maybe. If they think no, then it should be denied. Motion to grant, motion to deny?
I'll make a motion to grant.
Motion to grant, John Frank?
I'll second.
Second, Dan Dupre?
Yes.
Dan Dupre, second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, John Frank?
Yes.
Dan Dupre?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Chairman Assad? Yes, okay, so that petition is granted. Okay, so that petition is granted, I wouldn't do it, I'd tell the kids to move out.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Agenda item number two, Jacob Barbour, care of Mark Levin Esquire, County and Rocliff Street, Lot K six eighteen. Variance request to construct a single-family dwelling, waiving area, frontage, front, side, and rear yard setbacks, and lot coverage in an A2 district.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Christine, how you doing? Attorney Mark Yell Levin, one-three-eight Rock Street, Warford, Massachusetts, representing Jacob Barbour, with the, uh, property that we're seeking a variance on. I'll give you a little history, how this lot actually comes about. Uh, before nineteen seventy-two, there were six buildings on one corner lot on County and Rocliff. Uh, you see, four of the, the six that were there, there was a, uh, down on thirty-one, another building that was lost in a fire. And then this lot that my client seeks to buy to build a single-family home. This lot, from what I can see in the records with the city, was either a four-family or a five-family dwelling that, as you see the shape, the odd shape of the thing, was done because it pretty much was the footprint of the building. There was no parking, it was just a very large building on that corner, uh, and that was it. Uh, subsequently, there was a fire, building was razed. Um, and since that time, with the sellers of the property, the people that own it now, um, looking at the history of the city of Four Rivers Registry of Deeds, I see that the city has had to clean up the place many a time, and there were a few liens to the city, brought a health for cleanup, because it was being used in the area as a dumping ground and maybe a hangout or something. But I have, they, they put up the property, they, they're not local people that own it. My client wants to be able to build a single-family on this house. So, in designing the single-family, because right now, based on, it used to be a G-zone, just so you know, so there was no, no really requirements before, so they were able to cut it up back then without even a variance, they just did it where they form a subdivision back in nineteen seventy-two. So this, uh, client wants to purchase this, and as part of the study and looking at this with the engineers and myself, we said, well, if you're gonna build a single-family home here, we wanna, since it's on the corner, we have to make sure, 'cause County Street's a busy street, Rocliff, not as much, that you're not gonna block that corner, 'cause originally, my client was gonna put parking on the County Street side to go out, because this address used to be one-thirty-seven County Street. And then we looked at it, says, no, that's not a good plan. Put the parking in a different location, so we get the two-car parking spaces that were never there before, uh, and leave the corner open, so that there's a full visual view from Rocliff and County Street on both sides. So that, the parking was put down at Rocliff to make sure that there was visibility, and that obviously, if it's not at the corner, we would cause more of a problem, and the building isn't there. So the little, as you see, the little porch that will be on the
West.
west side of the property, that's actually the entrance and exit on either side, again, to not put it on either Rocliff or County Street to block visibility. So they'll, you know, they'll come in through the cars and go to the back of the property and, and go in. Now, it's a very unique property, uh, it was sold off in nineteen seventy-two, it's been owned by other parties, it has existed this way, it's, it's, it's an odd-shaped lot, uh, and it can't be used for anything but an empty lot without a variance. You just can't do anything with it, 'cause it doesn't meet any requirements of zoning. So that's what they're proposing, they, it was well fought out to try to make sure that it wasn't big, like I said, it used to be a, you know, it was either a four or five, I really can't, couldn't figure out what they were. Uh, and it was a huge piece of property at one point, it just really absorbed most of the lot. Uh, the piece below it on Rocliff had another building that went down at the same time I understood when this one did. So, I mean, this is what we have, uh, it's either can be built or can't be built and just be used as a junkyard, I guess the city is, you know, got some liens by the current owners for maintenance, because it was overridden by people that just use it for disposal. Thank you.
I think it was probably a six-family.
Well, six. It was hard to tell, we just tried to look at the thing.
And the fire was January first of two thousand and one.
Yeah. Oh, you're right, it was a six-family there, yeah, it was a huge building.
No, it took up the whole...
It took up, and that's why they have that little L, 'cause it took up the entire lot.
So it's gonna be a single-family, the dimensions, the dimensions are as shown on this
Yep.
plan.
Two parking.
Twenty-four by twenty-eight with that little bump out in the back, six by twelve.
Yep, that'll be where the entrance and exit.
Two off-street parking spaces.
And it was purposely done thus to make sure that there'd be full visibility.
No, that was good, the visibility part on County Street and Rocliff Street is, County Street's important, yes.
It is, I mean, that's why, you know, we said, you know, when he first had, well, it has an address of one-thirty-seven, I said, well, it doesn't have any address now, it, it, that burnt down.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it had, I think it had, yeah, street number was one-thirty-seven, County Street, before it was raised. Yeah, I'm gonna, I'll, I'll let you, I'm gonna get to you in a minute, sir, no problem, we'll let you speak. No, you're here, we're gonna make sure that you can speak.
I understand, I appreciate your job.
Okay. Um, any, I just wanna make sure, board members, any questions that we need to address? Caitlin, anything that we should hear from you about?
Uh, just one quick question, I noticed on the plan, you've got an office building labeled as well as, uh, mixed use. Uh, can you comment on some of the other mix of uses around?
That's not us, that's someone else down on Pleasant Street.
No, I, I was wondering what, what kind of uses are surrounding the...
All apartments.
All apartments? Okay.
Yeah, but the zoning line, the zoning line changes next to it.
Right.
Where you get into the BL district to the, I think it's to the west.
Right, and that's the building down on Pleasant Street that has mixed uses, but everyone, all the other properties surrounding it, across the street and around it, are all large, multi-family homes.
Multi-family, okay, thank you.
John Frank, Eddie Quip, anything? Ricky, anything we should, that maybe you're thinking about and we're not?
No.
I don't know who's in the lower right-hand corner, but, thanks for listening.
Sir, can you tell me who you are, please?
Uh, my name is Joe Ribello.
Joe Ribello, where do you live, mister?
On Rocliff Street.
Yes, you live over...
Out of the Mass.
Yes.
Uh, I've been there over forty years.
Okay.
And, uh, that place has been cleaned by the city, because Joe Ribello tried to correct that, that area, because that area has been a bad area all these years, I did the best I could, with the help of the public safety, uh, which nobody cares, the absentees, they don't care about the public safety, they only care for the Melon and help with the city. That's why they cleaned that property, because I fought it, because it was mice, it was everything, I have, I have an exterminator in all of my apartments every month, for my tenants, to make sure my tenants, I, I, and I don't lead my tenants. Uh, I wanted to buy that property, uh, because of that, uh, particular, you know, uh, but the guy never wanted to sell it to me. And the sewer is going right through that property, it was four properties, not five properties, four properties, connected to the same sewer line. And now, I was willing, and I am willing, to take over, not to build it. Because, you know, I want that, I, I, I am very proud of what I've done, me and my wife got back this old, we worked hard together, our neighborhood, every decent, not quite decent. Because people like to, they're absentee landlord, and the one up on, on County, I mean, in Pleasant and, and Rocliff, is a disaster. But I always kept my guns, and I am proud for all of yous, the city, to go buy my property and look how beautiful. Uh, you guys, the way that I see things, is they're getting rid of, and the owner about to buy it on the city. Because the absentee is coming and destroying our property, our labor huts, our public safety, just like that property. One of our fire departments, a young guy, when he near, he's never worked in his life anymore, because the landlord, he doesn't care. And is that what I'm gonna put up, that's what I have to do, I'll sell and I get out of the state. And, you know, I'll buy the property, I'll do whatever I have to do, that property has been a nuisance, and is on record. And I made that happen, and I am proud, I'm not afraid. I fight to the nail for the honesty, I work hard, that's why I am paying for what I did of my life. To get tossed around by people like that, that's not true, I'm not gonna let Joe Ribello go down like that. And with all your respect, I am praying for you guys to do something, because if we don't work together, nobody cares. You know, what are they gonna do, they're gonna make believe that they put it on, at the one fam, one family, and guess what, they're gonna sell it, make money, hard work, then it's gonna be another absentee, that's all we're gonna end up with.
But the proposal is for a single-family, one-family.
Yeah, I understand.
So it's not, the, the theory is, single-family dwellings, you have individuals that own it and are living there. It really doesn't lend itself to, for, for rental. But doing nothing, and the property, I guess, has been sold, Mark, I mean, Mr. Bo...
No, no, we're under agreement.
It's under agree, so it's...
Yeah, we need to, it's worthless, so...
No, 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 so, so what I'm saying is, you have somebody who's, wants to buy the property.
He wants to live here.
Wants to invest money, wants to invest in terms of developing and putting a single-family house there. So instead of it a vacant, vacant lot, with no one taking care of it, you'll now have somebody who's going to invest in constructing a single-family dwelling, and you'll have somebody living there. First, and I understand your issue about the absentee landlords, that is an issue, and, but this is the zoning board, maybe that discussion needs to happen upstairs with the city council. No, no, I'm just telling you.
Yeah.
I mean, our authority is very limited, I deal with, with this board deals with use of land, what you can do, what you can't do. What you've got right now on the corner of County and Rocliff Street is a vacant lot that was being used as a dump, that wasn't being taken care of. You now have someone who says, I wanna build a single-family house over here. They, and the way they're proposing on doing it, they've taken into consideration the traffic on County Street, the traffic on Rocliff Street, and they're asking this board for permission to do that. You're a director, butter, so I will let you speak and tell me about the neighborhood. I kinda know the neighborhood, I grew up down in Flint, um, I, I understand, and that's a, that's an area that you, you say, when you see someone who wants to invest money there, you're kind of excited about it, because it's not the absentee landlord who's just going to collect the rents and not be around.
Why didn't you tell us the name?
That I can't answer. That is way beyond this board's. But Mr. Levin, but Mr. Levin is representing the individual, you may wanna talk to him after the meeting.
What are they gonna do with my sewer? Because there's one other.
So, so, now listen, now that's gonna be an issue, I don't know, and I don't know whether, I did not do that independent research about whether or not there's one sewer line all tied together, but if you're telling me there is, then maybe one of the, then maybe one of the conditions would be for this lot, is that it needs to have separate utilities. And therefore, they'll have to then have its own utility for itself, and however else you're, if you're using that, that the issue may be, you're gonna have to tie into the sewer independently and not use that sewer anymore. So be careful what you wish for.
I, I really don't give it, you know, and...
No, no, that's what I'm saying, I don't know, there is nothing here that's being presented, it's showing as a vacant lot.
Yeah.
If you're telling me that there is this common sewer for all five properties, then maybe the board will make a determination and say that this single-family house need, that needs to have separate utilities. So there wouldn't be this combined, single-family house with four other properties going into this common sewer line that may run through the property. We wouldn't have known that, because nobody brought it to our attention but you.
It is intended they'll have their own water and sewer.
Yeah.
I, from what I understand, I mean, there was a foundation and everything, and that was...
No, but if there was the fault, I mean, I saw the seventy-two plan where everything got caved up.
Right.
If there is that common sewer and they haven't got it, maybe this is the time to make it all happen.
Yep, well, site plan review will require that.
Right, but I'm curious, did you do the title?
I did the title, but there's no easement.
So there's no easement, that was my question.
There was nothing of the same comment.
Ah.
I purposely didn't ask that question, I didn't wanna go down that road.
Uh, nineteen seventy-two, they weren't as sophisticated, so, I mean, my guess is...
No, no, so what, so what that makes...
When they excavated the building out, they would have ruined the sewer lines that were there.
I, I would have expected somebody to see either there was the easement in the chain of title that said, we all use it. When they build it, they may find it, but if we wanna put it as a condition, separate utilities, then you're gonna force the issue.
Yeah, that's no problem, that's good, the site plan review will require that.
I, I know it's not, but I, I wanna make sure Mr. Ribello understands
That's fine.
that by raising that issue now, that may be for the other properties, that may turn out to be an issue for you all. Okay, thank you, Mr. Ribello. But you may wanna talk to Mr. Levin or whoever, but this board has no authority.
The ones that have been running away from me.
I can't believe that.
Yes, I do, do believe that.
Yeah.
Who?
Do believe that, for the, for fair.
Okay.
Do you ever get in touch with me?
Okay.
I don't know you, sir.
Let's deal with this one piece of property, and after the meeting, you can talk to Mr. Levin. All right, is there anything else you'd like us to know?
I just wanna know the, uh, the...
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there anyone out there that I'm not paying attention to? No, okay. Members of the board, that's the proposal, uh, you have this uniquely shaped piece of property, we knew that there was a six-family on it, we know that there was a fire January first, two thousand and one, it's been razed. We've heard the problems in the neighborhood, what do you wanna do, you wanna grant the variance, you wanna say no, let it just stay a vacant lot, and let Mr. Ribello try to do what he needs to do with whoever the owner is.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve grant by Joe Pereira, do I have a second?
Obviously, that would include site plan.
Okay, say it, say, get all your conditions.
Including site plan, separate utilities for the, for the lot, for the single-family house. Um, yeah, as presented with the driveway on the, uh...
As shown on the plan.
Yep.
Built to the dimensions and the offsets as shown on the plan.
Yes.
Okay, Christine, yes, you, you got the mumbles?
No, 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 no.
Okay, so that's Joe Pereira's motion, do I have a second on that motion with those conditions?
Second.
Who's, John Frank? John Frank, second motion, second on the motion with those conditions. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Dan Dupere?
No.
Dan Dupere, no. Joe Pereira, yes?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
No.
No. John Frank, yes. Chairman Assad, yes. Uh, variance doesn't, does not pass, um, that motion, that petition is denied, thank you.
Your time.
No, thank you, thank you, Mr. Ribello, so, Mr. Ribello, you know that the mo, this project was just denied, they can't build a single-family house right now.
You know, I can talk to them, I'm not a beast, not a human being, just like anybody, yeah.
No, sir.
I just don't like to be taken advantage.
I understand, thank you very much for coming out.
I appreciate your job, I know you appreciate it.
Is there anyone here for citizen input, is there anyone out there who, what? Nope, I hear no citizen input. Um, so we had, I know Christine was working on the December sixteen, two thousand twenty-one minutes, I know that she hasn't finished them yet, so we can't vote on those. Um, next month's meeting, it should have been on this agenda, uh, but next meeting, I think it's on the agenda, we already know about it, um, under our rules and regulations, and forty-eight, we'll have election of officers for the year of twenty twenty-two. Uh, and other than that, can I get a motion to adjourn? Unless there's any other business we wanna talk about that's...
Do we have a, do we have a, was there a new schedule that came out?
I, I think Christine has the new schedule, she'll make sure that we all get the new schedule for our books.
All right, great, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Dan Dupere, second by Joe Pereira, any discussion on the motion, all those in favor?
All right.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
John Frank? Jim Corkins? Chairman Assad, yes. Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Four River, January twentieth, twenty twenty-two, is hereby closed, thank you all for your attendance.